Good evening, everyone. I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of September 21st, 2020 to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
into public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not sure what happened to the screen, Chris.
It should be okay. I'm looking for anybody with their camera on.
Okay. All right. First up is the consent agenda. Approved Town Council meeting minutes of September 1st, 2020. Accept the August 3rd, 2020 transcript as a record of the decision regarding amendments to Chapter 272 and 273. Accept the August 3rd, 2020 transcript as a record of the hearing regarding Centrica Business Solutions and James and Karen Shurenzia request for an amendment to the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. Accept the August 17th, 2020 transcript as a record of the hearing regarding Centrica Business Solutions. Maitland-Fathergill request for an amendment to the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. Accept the following monthly financial activity report. Town clerk approve refunds due to an overpayment by the escrow company on a 2019 motor vehicle tax and due to overpayments by an escrow company on 2020 real property taxes submitted by the tax collector. Approve abatements resulting from a correction to 2020 tangible tax regarding year of camper submitted by the tax assessor. Set October 5th, 2020 as a hearing day for the Class F liquor license for a virtual wine tasting fundraiser fundraising event filed by the Langworthy Public Library.
Could you please pull August 3rd transcript and the August 17th transcript?
Okay. And I'd like to pull a meeting minutes of September 1st, 2020. And you're pulling both transcripts from August 3rd.
I can't hear.
Scott, you can speak in the mic.
I apologize. You mean Counselor Capalvo pulling both August 3rd.
No, just accepting, just the August 3rd transcript for Centrica.
I'd like to have both transcripts pulled and the meeting minutes of September 1st, 2020.
Could you identify exactly which one you mean, Scott?
The Town Council meeting minutes of September 1st, 2020. August 3rd, 2020 transcript. Amendments to Chapter 272, 273. Accept the August 3rd, 2020 transcript for the record of hearing Centrica Business Solutions. Those that have won.
I guess it would be easier just to go down the list one by one because there's so many.
Okay. I would agree.
September 1st.
Okay. On page four, I believe the correct word, and I called Lisa on it, it's got Kodak, and it's actually, I believe, C-O-D-A-C. It's like a drug prevention type thing. And I gotta find the minutes, but it's on page four. And they have it down like it's a camera Kodak.
It's the last sentence in the first paragraph.
Yeah, it's actually, I think correctly, it's C-O-D-A-C. Because I remember they had that up in Cranston, so I assume it's the same thing. It's a drug, drug, deals with drug substance abuse and that type of stuff. That's the only correction I see.
Okay. All right. Go to your...
How about August 3rd?
Frank, would you like me to start? Would you like me to start?
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. While Scott's looking...
Well, one was Counselor, they had two L's. I know that was one thing.
We're not going to correct spelling.
We're not going to correct spelling.
Okay.
I pulled the August 3rd, 2020 transcript on Centrica with Shurenzia, page 43. I think that's Hale is misspelled, it's Hail, H-E-I-L. Page 43. Mr. Hale spoke. That was not H-A-L-E, it was H-E-I-L. That's Chip Hail.
That's correct.
So, just to correct that spelling because that's an entire person.
Anything else?
Yes, also August 17th, 2020 transcript, page 114. And that is, there are, President Landolfi asked for motions and all in favor, and Counselor Capalvo is not listed as saying "I." My assumption is that it was simply not heard or double. It was doublespoke.
What page, Bob?
Page 114. I just want to say that I should be listed as saying, also saying "I."
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay.
I think one of the things I noticed...
Scott, you guys stick into the mic.
I apologize. And I was looking at the minutes. I think they spelled DeRozier wrong, the woman that...
Let's just get into content. If there's anything...
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry. I won't talk about spelling.
Do you have any, Scott, on these transcripts?
No.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
A second.
Okay. Motion made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, I guess, is the thing.
Yep.
Okay. We've got a couple items under Old Business. First one is discuss, consider, and vote on a motion to either approve or reject the petition for an amendment to the Hopkinton Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map in an amendment to the Hopkinton Zoning Ordinance filed by Centrica Business Solutions, 1484 Candlewood Road, Suite T through W, Hanover, Maryland, 21076, and Karen M. and James W. Shurenzia Jr., 201 Chase Hill Road, Ashaway, Rhode Island, 02804, for property located at Chase Hill Road as Platte 2, Lot 32, in RFR 80 Zone, following the completion and closing of the public hearing on August 3rd, 2020. Okay.
A move that we deny the petition for an amendment to the Hopkinton Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map and the amendment to the Hopkinton Zoning Ordinance filed by Centrica Business Solutions, 1484 Candlewood Road, Hanover, Maryland, and Karen M. and James W. Shurenza of 201 Chase Hill Road, Ashaway, for property located at Chase Hill Road as Platte 2, Lot 32, in an RFR 80 Zone. That's it.
Second.
Okay.
Discussion.
We have a motion made in seconded? Yep.
Discussion?
Yep. Who wants to go first?
Sylvia. I will just say that I regret that this is a difficulty for the Shurenza family, but do, and I'm not even going to get to all the reasons why I'm voting no, because it's, they're listed throughout the record. Thank you.
Okay. Barbara?
When, this is my discussion on the Shurenzia decision. When this Hopkinton Town Council approved our latest comprehensive plan and zoning map, it was with the full cooperation of the Planning Board and Mr. Lamphier, our planner. The addition of renewable energy citing followed the State Energy 2035 Plan, D E M Regulations, and the State Economic Development Plan. The need for and citing of renewable energy in all its forms was and is still considered crucial to the well-being of all Rhode Island citizens, not simply each town and its exclusive energy needs, but the needs of the entire state. The Shurenzia property is bounded on two sides with commercial and industrial development, two sides with RFR 80 farm and residential land. Chase Hill Road itself is commercial industrial at either end, culminating at Route 216 and Route 3, both of which are state primary roads. The large National Grid transfer station borders this property. The developer has considered and conformed to all regulations, has listened to Abutters and others, has reduced the footprint substantially, enlarged the buffers on all sides, and proposes a renewable energy source that leaves the land itself intact for the future. We have known of this solar request for several years. It does indeed assist the property owners with their livelihood and their health and well-being. This council has supported farmers for the very same compassionate reasons, but their solar arrays are not buffered or hidden. They are specifically created to foster farming, meadows, pastures, and open fields for the rural character we all enjoy, and for animals to nest, hunt, and survive. Rural does not mean forest with houses. That's called suburban development bordering on becoming urban. I approve of this request as it fulfills our comprehensive plans, decision to foster renewable energy cited in new commercial areas created from prior RFR 80 land. My approval, which would be against Sylvia's motion, is predicated on the Planning Board's ability to create two separate lots or create a split zone to accomplish this authorization through R1 or RFR 80. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Sharon, you want to weigh in?
I was introduced to the significance of being part of a student government when I ran and was elected Vice President of my dorm during my sophomore year at Cornell University. I promised to obtain a new television from the university for the dorm if I was elected, and that happened. I also was able to eliminate curfews for junior and senior women and benefited from that the next year as a junior. As dorm president during my senior year, I eliminated curfews for all women. Therefore, I was able to affect the university experience for myself and for future women through being part of student government. When I moved to Hopkinton and recognized that solar projects could affect our home ownership experience, I immediately began learning all I could about solar projects. I also ran for a Hopkinton Town Councilor's seat to be in a better position to express the views of affected citizens. As I stated in my previous solar decisions, our homes are our refuge and the most important part of most families' net worth. I do not believe any Hopkinton homeowner should have that net worth threatened by the placement of solar farms in residential zones without both the express need and consent of our citizens. I have carefully evaluated the pros and cons of this request, listened to the residents for and against the project, visited the potential site, and considered the Planning Board's advisory opinion. Once again, my decision regarding this project has boiled down to the answers to four questions. One, is this project consistent with the current comprehensive plan that was finally approved in 2018? The answer is no. After reviewing, number two, after reviewing all of the pertinent facts, did the Planning Board favorably recommend this project? The answer is no. Number three, was I able to find an outside factor such as the project is on town-owned land? The answer is no. Number four, do the affected residents of our town want this project? The answer is no. Therefore, I vote to reject this project's comprehensive plan land use map amendment request, and I vote to reject this project zoning amendment request. Therefore, I am siding with Sylvia Thompson's motion. I'm for that motion.
Excuse me. Thank you. Scott?
Yes. Scott Billhurst, Vice President of the Town Council. When you're on a town council, and especially when you grow up in a town, you get to know a lot of people. I've known multiple generations of the Shurenzia family. And I don't like to be put in the predicament that I'm in right now anymore than I was when we dealt with John Palmer and the Windmills, somebody that I know since I was a child, known multiple generations of the Shurenzia family. I remember telling Mr. Shurenzia that I'd like to help him, but the history is that some time ago, they were going to do electrical place over on River Road, and the people in that section of town did not want that place. And it was moved over to the Chase Hill area. And I think the promise, I don't know if it was ever said in a meeting or whatever, but I guess some promises were made, I'm not sure, but that's not the point. The point of the matter is that what I tried to do, and people know that I've been against all the solar, and that's my voting record, but what I tried to do is to recognize the fact that National Grid needed a place to put their electrical system, and it had to be in an area close to electrical lines. And it was toward the Shurenzia property. So I was open to a small solar thing, maybe something like Simplicity Farms or something like that, a few acres, as some type of recognition of that sacrifice. But I have to be realistic that the six acre is not acceptable to me, and I'm going to be voting against it. I will say that the Planning Board has spoken.
River Road defeated.
Who's that, Sharon?
No, it's not.
Okay. Chris, can we mute everybody? I thought everybody was muted.
They are. I don't know who that is.
It's not me.
Okay. Sorry, Sharon.
And the Planning Board has made a recommendation, and I have a lot of respect for the Planning Board institutionally. If it was a smaller size, like Simplicity Farms, I would have certainly considered it or probably been agreeable to it. And the most important thing is that we do have a comprehensive plan, that we should follow the spirit of it, lest there's extenuating circumstances. We should respect the Planning Board even though the Town Council is the one directly accountable to the people because we're elected. And also, we have to take into consideration the neighbors. Numerous neighbors were against it, and I have always taken into consideration in all my votes, and you can look at my record, but it was in Ho Valley where there's a number of, up on Lisa Lane and Grand Serene Drive and all that area where I was in a minority when that was approved. The fact of the matter is that regardless of what the zoning at that specific point is, Chase Hill Road is a long road. And also, it's important to realize it's a neighborhood. It's not like a business area, even though some of the zoning in that area might meet that description. The fact of the matter is all and up down Chase Hill Road, all the way from Oak Street down on Chase Hill Road to Route 216, there's numerous houses here, and that's a residential area. That is a fact. And also, it's important to recognize that reality. So I'm going to be voting against that. My apologies to the Shurenzia family. I feel that I have to listen to what the neighbors say. I'm going to listen to what the Planning Board says, and I'm going to follow my own conscience. I want to be consistent. I thought that this was probably extenuating circumstances because of the situation when the power thing was being considered over in the River Road area, River Road area, and then the council or the powers that be at that time decided to have it over in the Chase Hill area. So a lot of decisions aren't easy. But I'm going to vote no on this, and I'm a little disappointed, and I want to say it because if you followed my line of questioning at the hearing, when I asked why didn't they come up with a different proposal, and they said it wasn't financially feasible. Well, when you're on a town council, and I've been on the town council seven terms now, on and off, is the fact that you can't make a decision solely on whether or not it's financially feasible to an applicant. You've got to think of what the town wants, what the Planning Board recommends, and those type of factors. And I'm not moved to vote for this, and I'm going to be voting against it. Thank you.
Okay, Scott, thank you. Yeah, Sylvia?
Just to provide a little background, in reference to the National Grid station that ended up being located over near Chase Hill and Route 216, no promises were ever made. There was a proposal to begin with, which was in the middle of a neighborhood, completely surrounded. It wasn't River Road, it was the entire neighborhood of Ashaway. The council, and I was on the council at that time, were very concerned, and Bill was our manager. We were very concerned about children and access to it being in the middle of a neighborhood. And so we turned to National Grid and asked them if they could look elsewhere and find another piece of property because they owned that property and they thought it'd be convenient to put it there. So National Grid cooperated and started looking for land. We didn't tell them where to go. They came up with a proposal that was in the woods, out of the way, that had access to Route 216. They did not use Chase Hill Road, and they did what they did. And I remember distinctly that Mr. Shurenza did come to one of the meetings and expressed his dismay that that would be placed there. They didn't like it, and I can understand that. And at that time, he wondered whether or not he'd be able to do solar, and eventually they did submit their petition. But I just thought I'd provide that background because I was there. Thank you.
I just wanted to add to Sylvia's comments because I was there as well. The people who did live on River Road and in that area were very pleased that National Grid worked with us as well as they did, and moved it to the new location. So the citizens got together and worked through the zoning board to work with National Grid to change that position. And it was a much better one, I think, overall, and I think National Grid was as pleased working with us as the citizens who did not want it in their area were very pleased when it was moved over to 216.
Okay. Thanks, Barbara. Thanks, all. Yeah, so this project has been around a long time, a lot of delays. Yeah, I just want to touch upon some of the delays, or many of the delays. You know, I know it was spoken about in the transcript that it makes it difficult for residents or whoever doesn't like solar. Well, that may be true, but it also makes it very difficult for the legislative body that has to actually vote on it. You know, it's really, believe, from my perspective, you lose, it loses its impact when you have to just go back to, you know, previous transcripts and try and remember what happened instead of relying on a recent meeting that may have occurred. It's just more impactful for us. It helps in our decision-making process. So the delays warranted or unwarranted, you know, because of the interconnection expert, you know, didn't help the situation. This project, I had asked Attorney Sirdat on at least two occasions to do a site visit, and it never came through. I find that if you do a site visit, and you're able to do one, it does really shed a lot of light as to where the abutters are, how close they are to the property line, how thickly forested the areas are, if there's any other issues that you just can't see from a map. And that, unfortunately, that option was not afforded to me, and I'm disappointed at that. So the other thing, too, that Scott had mentioned about, you know, giving the applicants a suggested option about reducing the size of the project, you know, Scott has been on the record not in favor of solar, but he actually stepped up to the plate on this particular project and mentioned that. He had not, at least to my knowledge, mentioned that in any other project because I think he felt that the Shurenzia family was important to the town. I know them, I know Scott does, and others. So that, to me, spoke volumes, not only to Scott's willingness to perhaps compromise on some of his past decisions, but I was surprised that, you know, like Scott said, it wasn't economically feasible. That's fine, but, you know, it may not get approved either. Three acres or 3% might be better than nothing. So very disappointed that nothing along those lines was even explored remotely. Aside from that, my main reason for not supporting this is the fact that during the whole hearing process, the applicant's attorney and all the experts on the applicant's side never really discussed the fact that ultimately there's a split zone, there's a house there, right? So, you know, that's really important. Now, I've asked a lot of questions today from planning experts as well as legal experts, and it's important, I think, to avoid a split zone and illegal non-conforming use to actually have a subdivision plan. It really wasn't touched upon at all during the hearing process, which I find rather odd. You know, if I was perhaps in the Shurenzias' position, I think I would have gotten a subdivision first, got that approved, and then perhaps done something with solar, or at least tried to anyway. But again, just not having that, again, the expert opinions I got from legal and planning today was that it needs to have a subdivision in order to be, to avoid a legal non-conforming property. It's okay to have a legal existing non-conforming property, but you can't, really shouldn't create one like having a split zone. So just disappointing that that wasn't even brought out, and I'm not sure why. So it's really not up to the council or legislative body to make in their motion the fact that they have to get a subdivision in order for it to pass muster and not be legal non-conforming. So anyway, just disappointing. I did talk to one of the family members, and I was hopeful that the Shurenzia family, that I might be able to get some kind of an abutter list that was in favor of the project. I was told that something was out there, and I never did get that, so I'm not sure if that ever existed or perhaps just didn't materialize. So that didn't happen. When we were at the school, middle school auditorium during one of the hearings, what struck me about a lot of the abutters, especially from the Grills family, and perhaps one of the Dion family members or relatives of the Dions, was how respectful they were. You know, usually the hearings are rather contentious, and people just, you know, want to point fingers and not give us the benefit of the doubt of having a difficult decision. But I was really, really impressed with how respectful the Grills family were and some of the Dion relatives were as well. So much so, it really, again, resonated with me after I left that meeting and stayed with me up until this point where I got an email from one of the, I think, the Dion family, a relative of the Dions, I guess, tonight. And it was still respectful, and it was nice to have. So it was really, I thought, very important. Anyway, so I'm not going to support this unfortunately because my main reason is because of that, the house being there and having to go through a subdivision, which I believe is required in order to not have a legal non-conforming property, because you can't sell a house with a solar field on it. So, and so, anyway. So that's that. You know, I know a lot of, when I read the transcripts, you know, it sort of frustrated me because a lot of the information I felt was incorrect. You know, solar is in the comprehensive plan. It's listed there for economic development. It's in residential areas, it's listed. The Planning Board, like it or not, doesn't have all these mystical powers that a lot of people think and should think they should have, they just don't. Their opinion is advisory, that's it. We can take it or not. We don't have to take their opinion. We don't have to take their opinion, or we don't. We can go in another direction, which I've typically done, and I'm fine with that. And other folks place a lot of weight on their opinions. I just, I just didn't. So, I wanted to clarify that for the record. So, anyway, that's my two cents on the project. So, all right, I guess we have a motion made and seconded. Any further comments from the council? All right, having heard none, we'll make our decision, our vote. Signify by saying yes, or if you're not approve.
A name and saying yes.
Yes, a name and saying yes. That's better, Scott. Yes. All right, so Sylvia made the motion. It was seconded by Sharon, I believe, to not approve the project. Those in favor of that proposal signify by saying yes in your name.
Sharon Davis. Sorry.
Yep, good.
Go ahead, Sharon.
Go ahead, Sharon.
Sharon Davis, yes.
Sylvia Thompson, yes.
Scott Billhurst, yes.
Frank Landolfi, yes. All those opposed to that motion signify by your name and saying no.
Barbara Capelbo, no.
Okay, the motion carries. All right. Thank you. Number two, discuss, consider, and vote on a motion to either approve or reject the petition for an amendment to the Hopkinton Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map and the Hopkinton Zoning Ordinance filed by Centrica Business Solutions, 1484 Candlewood Road, Suite T through W, Hanover, Maryland, 21076, and Maitland-Fogegill, 16 Wallen Drive, Cumberland, Rhode Island, 02864, for property located at 10A Crandall Lane, number B, Ashway, Rhode Island, 02804, identified as plat 2 Lot 001, an RFR 80 zone, following completion and closing of the public hearing on August 17, 2020.
This is Sylvia Thompson. I move that we reject the petition for an amendment to the Hopkinton Comprehensive Future Land Use Map and the Hopkinton Zoning Ordinance filed by Centrica Business Solutions, 1484 Candlewood, in Hanover, Maryland, and Maitland-Fogegill, I'm sorry if I don't pronounce things right, 16 Wallen Drive, Cumberland, for property located at 10A Crandall Lane, number B, Ashway, Rhode Island, identified as plat 2 Lot 001, an RFR 80 zone. Thank you.
I second it.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Who wants to start?
Shall I start?
Well, Scott's got his, he jumped his. Scott, you got the floor.
Okay. Scott Billhurst, Vice President of the Council. I'm against the Maitland-Fogegill. Number one, and I would suggest to anybody, if you look at a map of the town of Hopkin regarding solar, either proposed or has been approved, most of them, or the majority of them, is in this bottom half of Hopkin, which is the Ashway-South Hopkin area. And I was looking at the map, and it's really, not that we don't have some in the northern part of town, but I just find, found it interesting when you really see the yellow color that's showing. Bottom line is this. The Planning Board did not endorse this, and I think that unless you really have a compelling reason, the Planning Board's opinion should carry a lot of weight. And the town is really deluged with solar, and it seems that solar seems to be fair game for a lot of developers, because it seems that we seem to get more of these projects than any other local towns in this area or region. I don't think that the financial benefits are that outstanding to develop these solar things, beneficial to the town. And you've got to consider the public opposition. And I also want to maintain my consistency opposing large solar, and it's also my personal opinion. And they, it's really interesting, there was, I believe his name was Vincent Murray, he produced an interesting document. So, and the people, both in the Shurenza proposal we just rejected and this Maitland-Fogegill, the neighbors were motivated, and I think well-spoken, and that should be noted, as well as the opinion of the Planning Board, and that's what I have to say. Thank you. So my vote will be no.
Thanks, Scott. Sharon, you want to weigh in on Fogegill?
Okay. I've been the town council's liaison to Planning Board meetings, and as such, I listen to solar project applicants present their cases twice. I have always supported the Planning Board's recommendations. I also recently participated in a solar siting opportunities meeting presented by Patrick Knight of SYNAPSE, S-Y-N-A-P-S-E, Energy Economics, at the request of Christopher Kearns of the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources. SYNAPSE Energy reported their quantitative analysis of potential sites in Rhode Island for future solar energy installations. I was amazed to hear that they did not consider any residential zones in Rhode Island for these installations. As I stated in my previous solar decisions, our homes are our refuge and the most important part of most families' net worth. I do not believe any Hopkinton homeowner should have that net worth threatened by the placement of solar farms in residential zones without both the express need and consent of our citizens. I have carefully evaluated the pros and cons of this request, listened to the residents for and against the project, visited the potential site, and considered the Planning Board's advisory opinion. Once again, my decision regarding this project has boiled down to the answers to four questions. Number one, is this project consistent with the current comprehensive plan that was finally approved in 2018? The answer is no. Number two, after reviewing all of the pertinent facts, did the Planning Board favorably recommend this project? The answer is no. Number three, was I able to find an outside factor such as the project is on town-owned land? The answer is no. And number four, do the effective residents of our town want this project? The answer is no. Therefore, I vote to reject this project's Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map Amendment request, and I vote to reject this project zoning amendment request, which means that I am voting for the motion that was placed by Sylvia Thompson. Thank you.
Okay. Barbara, you want to go?
This is Barbara Capelbo. I believe the Fogegill property can easily go either way. Our comprehensive plan allows and encourages both a solar array and a housing development, or it can be left as vacant land. As Sylvia has mentioned, and as Sharon has mentioned, we have all listened to these projects in all of their array. I certainly, as Sharon, have listened to the Planning Board in duplicate. This particular property could become a solar array. It would be quiet, dark, no kids, no tar, no roads, no municipal services, no additional school taxes, no septic, no waste, but it would have high tax assessment, both property and tangible. One boundary is industrial, but the other three are R1 and RFR 80. Or it could easily become a housing development, as it is between two town roads that could find a good and busy way to intercept each other. Wetlands can be bridged, under duress perhaps, but they can be. There is nothing distinctly commercial nearby, large or small businesses, or easily accessible state roads. And we do need apartments, market-priced housing, low-income housing, or perhaps a veterans home. I do think that the developer, Centrica, has considered well, has taken the abutters' comments into his design, has reduced the amount of forest cut, has enlarged buffers, agreed to move transformer further into the project and away from the homes, has offered to assist the town with its electrical costs, all of which are appreciated. Centrica has done respectable and thorough work in Hopkinton. They have been good neighbors and efficient developers in other parts of town, and I believe they would be the same here. I appreciate their work. However, in this instance, my considered opinion is that the parcel is better served as possible housing retained as RFR 80 than becoming commercial special as a photovoltaic solar array. This takes a great deal of discussion and thought and consideration. Every single project is different, and I do not come at each project making my decision before I've heard anything. It is important that anyone who is going to be serving on this council realizes each project is looked at individually, and you make your decision on individual needs and directions. The comp plan can sustain either. In this instance, I do believe it is better if it stays as housing property or RFR 80. That was obviously not the case on the earlier one, nor was it the case at Exit 1, where that was voted down by me as well. But you must pay attention individually to each proposal and not have a blanket statement that I always go with the Planning Board, or I always decide against solar. You must look at these things individually, and I recommend that highly to the eight different people that are running for this council in the next election. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara.
Frank?
Yes.
I would like to say something to Barbara.
Can I speak before we do that?
Sharon, we have two other councils that haven't weighed in comments yet.
All right.
Save it to the end, please. Thank you.
I'd like to jump right in. This is Sylvia Thompson with what Barbara just said. I agree completely with her statement that, you know, every project that comes before the Planning Board, or comes before the council, or goes before the zoning board, has to be made on the particulars of the project. And that's where you decide yes or no, or you revise it based on comments, or whatever. But I agree completely that, and so I'll get into the written comments that I have. And I'm sorry, folks, you're going to have to be patient, because it's going to take a while. Specifically, a couple of things. There are residents who may have listened in on either one of these proposals that we're dealing with tonight, the most recent, the one that we're discussing right now. And I wouldn't be surprised if there are people who were listening, or were abutters, who have never attended a meeting, a council meeting, never needed to, never wanted to, and maybe they're listening for the first time, maybe they're new in town, maybe they've lived here all their life. But there are obviously people that are listening perhaps for the first time, or the second time. And when any one individual or an expert, and I'll speak to individual comments that were in this last transcript, when an individual sounds like they know better, may pepper comments with court cases, or refer to the comp plan, or ordinances that are 30 years old, or whatever, and may sound like an authority, I ask people to keep an open mind. So, some of the abutters that did attend and had comments spoke to their, being tired of these hearings, are being tired of listening. The council, in this instance, in these solar projects, we don't have a choice. We don't put this on the agenda because we support something. Under the law, if someone asks for a zone change, the council is required to have a hearing and to hear it. And unfortunately, some of these hearings with the expert witnesses, you have to let them have their say. They have to put items on the agenda, in the transcript, and before you and before the residents, and that takes time. And then there are some folks who didn't like, perhaps, when the council president said, "Okay, you've got 10 minutes, everybody, and let's hear from the abutters." And some of the abutters, like, they didn't appreciate our light that they had to through the hearing, or only had 10 minutes. But I would refer to the transcript, and every single abutter, or resident that spoke, except one, spoke for four minutes or less. And in the past, and it would have occurred with this last hearing if necessary, I just want to note that the council president may say, "Okay, you've got five minutes or 10 minutes." They go through the comments, and then he does a second round. So you can't cut people off. You have to let them finish. And fortunately, we were able to wrap it up that night and finish. So that was just one comment. Now, going through the record, I would like to speak to the facts and note what comments were incorrect. Some were, or as I refer to falsehoods, and there was even a ridiculous one. The ridiculous one was, of course, the electric bill, and we were going to save, I don't know, $6 million over, and they didn't even know what our electric cost is per year. So that was silly. But I would like to speak to the falsehoods, or the mistakes. And I'm not going to speak to motives, I'm only going to, I'm only going to speak to specifically correct comments that were made by Eric Bibler, which was at the end of the meeting. On page 146, excuse me, 126, I'd like to read something. The comment, it's the 10A Crandall Lane, and it's, I'm sorry, it's page 126. And these are in reference to comments by Eric Bibler. He stated, "I don't know whether it's the 30th, or the 32nd, or the 36th. I don't know how many of these projects that you have had in front of you, as if it were legitimate for you to ignore the Planning Board, to ignore the precedence of approvals, ignore the Comprehensive Plan, and then determine, you five people acting completely in defiance of what your constituents are telling you that they want, and to determine, like God, when, whether or not you can ignore the Comprehensive Plan and go ahead and greelite one more instance of solar sprawl." Just for the record, the council has heard five, this council has heard five solar projects. There were two yeses, and after tonight, it will add up to, I expect, because of the comments, to three noes. On one front, on page 123, the comment was by Eric Bibler, "There was never any authority granted to this town council, or any other town council, to evaluate properties on a case-by-case basis in their residential zone to determine on the merits of any individual project whether or not any of these should be spot-zoned for solar use." It's wrong. Only the town council can grant or deny rezones. Only the town council can amend or approve the Comprehensive Plan.
I think we've lost some audio.
Yeah. Hello? Sylvia? Sylvia?
Seems to be a network problem. I'm going to take care of it.
Okay, now we can hear you.
Oh, this is...
I'm gonna take.
Okay, now we can hear you.
Oh, this is Chris. I'm just saying there's a network.
I can hear you now. Chris?
Yeah, there seems to be a problem at Town Hall. I'm gonna work on it right now. Everybody, hold tight real quick.
Okay. Okay.
I could read back, I could read you where you left off when ready. Sylvia?
Everybody's coming back in one second. Okay, I think everybody's back.
Yeah, I don't see him on the right side of the screen, Chris.
I'm here.
Hold on one second, Frank.
Yep. Hold on, Sharon.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay, there we go. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Yeah, Meredith, if you could recite where we left off.
Yep, Sylvia was quoting from Eric Bibler, and then the quote ended, "residential zone to determine on the merits of any individual project whether or not any of these should be spot-zoned for solar use," unquote. Then Sylvia said, "It's wrong. Only the town council can grant or deny rezones. Only the town council can amend or approve the comprehensive plan," and that's where it ended.
Okay. That's almost everything. All right. Want me to continue?
Yes, please, Sylvia. Thank you. Thank you, Meredith.
All right, so this is Sylvia again. The transcript on page 124, recommendation 19. The one that follows it, and this is from the transcript, recommendation 19, the one that follows it under the energy section, is to consider a zoning ordinance to prevent wind energy projects in appropriate zoning districts. Responsibility to the planning board, timeframe, one to two years. We did that, too. The planning board considered whether or not to allow wind energy projects in any zone in Hopkinton, and they said no. They weren't going to change that. It is not a permitted use in any zone, and in fact, the town council followed up by making it a prohibited use in every zone. So this is how a comp plan is administered. This is how zoning proceeds, and this is, and this is still from Eric Bibler, and I would say that is completely wrong. Last year, I told Eric Bibler I would be requesting an amendment to the comp plan to prohibit wind turbines. Them are 400, 500. So I did.
I missed that.
I sent it to the town council, and they agreed to have a hearing as required by law, and as part of that, we asked the planning board for an advisory. That is normal procedure as well. So I sent the amendment over there. They agreed that the wind turbines should not be allowed in all districts, and the town council voted to prohibit them. So it was a town council action, and that's the way it's normally done. If you, the planning board may, and they have the responsibility over time to look at the comprehensive plan, and every so many years, we amend it, and it goes upstate. But that is something the planning board works on, and then it goes to the town council for town council investigation and approval or change. All right, so the next one is on one, let's see, page 121, and basically, it is, the town has two lawsuits against it now, and with, and this is his comments, with Mr. Bibler's group and the attorney. There are not two lawsuits. As a matter of fact, tens of thousands of dollars of donations were received by residents within our town and perhaps without to, and I believe as of last August 2019, more than 50,000 was spent and used to sue the town over the Skunk Hill rezoned project. And that project was to allow solar in a residential zone, which was rezoned by, approved by this council, and Mr. Bibler's group and attorney, is their right sued over this decision. There were issues like whether there's a supermajority, whether a project is invested, et cetera, but the problem is that the first day of court, it was dismissed. It was thrown out because more than 14 pages was submitted at the first day in court. And I bring that up to let residents know that, you know, basic law 101 and the basic rule is when you submit a brief, and that's what you do on the first day of court, the judge wants to look at, I don't know, 10, 11, 12 pages. It's called a brief, not 1,400 pages. How could a lawyer make this tragic mistake? Well, it did happen. So the issues of the supermajority, whether a project's invested, any of those items that were expected to go to court and be discussed and decided upon never happened. So the only lawsuit that exists now is this was dismissed on procedural grounds because it wasn't a brief. None of the merits of the case were discussed and still haven't been decided in any court of law. So all that money and all that was just wasted. So I bring it up because there's one suit, and the only suit is an appeal before the Supreme Court of this decision. And the decision that the judge made was on procedural grounds and kicked it out of court. So they're appealing something that was on procedural grounds, and it was 1,400. How are they gonna win that? So are there two suits? No, there's just this appeal. Moving on, the council wanted, and I'm saying the council, and I will say this broadly, the council wanted to stop what I call the madness, so many proposals, so many rezones. So in January 22, 2019, the solar ordinance was amended and was made very restrictive in such a way as to make it unaffordable to developers, and they're not gonna want, and the likelihood they would not want any rezones. For instance, if there was a 100-acre piece, and they could only do a maximum in that instance of three acres, but the entire piece would be assessed as commercial, so it does become unaffordable. But this was not a joint effort with the planning board. It was the residents at that last town council hearing where we were going through paragraph by paragraph on this solar ordinance, and it was comments from the residents that we then agreed to and decided to make it even more restrictive, and it occurred at that meeting, and it occurred, and it occurred specifically because of residents and what they said. On page 125 of the transcript of this last hearing, the comment was that the council chooses to ignore an ordinance requiring a supermajority in these instances, and that means it would take four votes to one instead of the majority that we go by, which is three votes. And that comment is wrong. There may be an ordinance, I don't care if it's 100 years old, 100-year-old, or 30-years-old, ordinances rule, but then the charter rules over that, and the state law, not, you know, Kevin McAllister could say this a lot more in a better way, but state law supersedes it all. So if there is something in the charter, and there's something in the ordinance, and they conflict, the charter rules. If there's a conflict with the charter or an ordinance, and it's a state law, state law rules. For instance, the term of office, and we have a town ordinance that speaks to the planning board, and the ordinance says that the term of office for a planning board member is five years. Well, guess what? It's not five years because the charter says it's three years. So that was just an example. In the end, the planning board has its rules and charge, as does the town council. They have their business, we have our business. Sometimes there is a conflict. For instance, in 2006, the planning board had approved an affordable housing project across the street from the ball field in Hope Valley, behind those houses, which is now a small solar field. It was, it included 10 units in a multifamily building for the severely disabled, which South Shore Mental Health was gonna oversee, and then another 20 units that were dispersed with duplexes and fourplexes. This was, you know, that's a very small piece of land back there. So the planning board had approved the project. They also were planning to sign in a contract with Richmond that would allow water to go into the project because the planning board specifically said, we'll go for this, but you gotta have city water, town water. I had just been elected, and in the end, we had to go to court to stop the project. The planning board had no authority to enter into a contract with another town. That's town council business. So we ended up actually going to court because the women's development sued and wanted their project, and we would not give them the water. Fred Stanley was the fire chief at the time, and he had provided us with an old Westerly Sun photo that showed.
We have a problem.
And the woman, and the woman that lived in that house had to be removed by boat. So Fred Stanley had gone to the planning board and said, look, here's a picture, it's flooded, you can't do this. Well, in the end, it was the town council that stopped it, and a few years later, when Irene, Tropical Storm Irene came, it was completely flooded. So, you know, there are gonna be conflicts between the two. I'm hoping that, for the most part, we work together as a team. I brought all of this up because things get said at meetings, and some people speak with authority and may have a track record of failure. So I think I would encourage residents to do the best, to do their homework, listen, comment, send us emails, whatever you need to do. But I had to, I just couldn't leave the record the way it was with all these comments that were outlandish or ridiculous or wrong. Thank you.
Thanks, Sylvia. I've got some comments on the project, and also, I agree with Sylvia. When I read the transcript, it was littered with inaccuracies and, in my opinion, not correct legal arguments by a long shot. So I've got some other comments, and then I'll get into the comments specifically to the Father Gill project, but this is all related to this particular project. But I wanted to have, before I started, I wanted to have Kevin McAllister, our solicitor, weigh in on a lot of the legal inaccuracies that I discovered in the transcript that were said at the last meeting that, you know, may or may not have resonated with people that are outside of the process. So Kevin, if you'd be kind enough to do that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, this is Kevin McAllister. Just kind of elaborating on what Councilwoman Thompson just said about the court cases. I'm the lawyer for the town that represents the town in these court cases. The Skunk Hill case she referred to is in the Supreme Court on appeal. At the time, those comments were made that there were two pending cases, the comments were made at the Father Gill public hearing by Mr. Bibler that there were two pending cases in the Superior Court. To my knowledge, there were none in the Superior Court at that point because the two cases that I was involved in with the Superior Court involving solar in Hopkinton recently, both had been dismissed out of the Superior Court at the time of that public hearing. The one that Sylvia Thompson was referring to is the Skunk Hill case that was dismissed and appealed by the plaintiffs to the Supreme Court where it is pending on appeal. That case was dismissed in the Superior Court because the court found that the lawsuit complaint, which is the document that's filed to start a case, did not conform with the rules for complaints, for initiating complaints, and dismissed it, and they appealed to the Supreme Court, which is their right. The other thing which I want to elaborate on that started with Councilwoman Thompson's remarks a couple minutes ago, is that a lot of the issues, the legal issues that have continued to be brought up at public hearings, including this Father Gill one pertaining to supermajority and other issues like that, those were decided on the merits after arguments on summary judgment this, a few months ago, in the Maxon Hill project on 310 Main Street. The court agreed with the town's position that a supermajority was not required. Sylvia Thompson explained some of the reasons. She did a fine job in doing that. For example, state law supersedes any ordinances that are in conflict. The charter supersedes any ordinances that are in conflict. Those were all ruled on in this case by the Superior Court judge. And to my knowledge, that case was not appealed, the Maxon Hill case, and that's the end of it. There's no contrary judicial opinion that supports the arguments such as the supermajority argument and the 30-year-old ordinance that Sylvia Thompson referred to. The court has already stated that those were correctly and appropriately ignored by the council in those cases, dismissed the case on summary judgment, and it's very difficult to prevail on summary judgment, which is before a trial's even held. So I think she's correct, Sylvia Thompson's correct in describing some of those legal arguments as completely inaccurate, and people have a right to have their opinions and to express their opinions, but, you know, the factual part about cases that the town has been served with in Superior Court, there were, at that time, that statement was made, there were no Superior Court cases that the town was or is aware of in the Superior Court that make these issues still alive. They're not. So, you know, that's the legal end of it. The other statements Sylvia Thompson made about the process and who gets to adopt or change ordinances, for example, the wind ordinance and how that got to be banned in all zones in the town, Sylvia Thompson's description of that is entirely accurate, factually. That was a change in ordinance. It was controlled, the process is controlled by the state law. She initiated the process. It went to the planning board for an advisory opinion, which is not binding on the council. They They issued the advisory opinion as they did. And then the council's the one that banned wind energy in all zones in town, not the planning board. So there's a common misunderstanding of the relative powers and authorities of the planning board vis a vis the town council. And, you know, that those things need to be listened to with a grain of salt. Because, just because someone has a strong articulate opinion doesn't mean it's valid. And I think that was Sylvia's point and I think she's correct.
Okay.
Is that what you were asking me to comment on?
Yes, thank you Kevin.
Okay.
I appreciate it. So, yeah, going along on the Father Gill project, my comments sort of echo Sylvia's frustration in reading the transcript, although there was a document regarding the company that's, I guess, involved in this project, which is Centrica, that was sent out by Mr. Bibler to a lot of people, I assume. But the, you know, the actual response from the company, I doubt was sent to all those recipients. So in the spirit of being transparent, it's just another indication of, you know, don't believe everything you hear. And I'm going to go through this because the letter was written by Mr. Teletman, who's the senior director for business development at Centrica. It was in response to Mr. Bibler's email sent to a lot of people. And Mr. Teletman had sent a copy or response to the council and the planning board. And I'm going to just read some of the falsehoods that were mentioned in Mr. Bibler's letter to, I assume, all the people that he has on his email list. So, this letter was sent to the planner and myself, Chairman Giorio, and the town council on the planning board. Mr. Teletman, I'm quoting him. "I'm writing to you today to respectfully correct the record regarding the letter you received from Mr. Bibler regarding the announcement made last Friday that Centrica has agreed to sell its direct energy subsidy to subsidiary to NRG for 3.6 billion. As Mr. Bibler's letter was littered with inaccuracies and false statements. It is also important that I provide you with the facts. Although Mr. Bibler expressed many opinions in his letter, which I disagree, the purpose votes are to address demonstrably false statements about my, and to set the record straight. I've laid out many of his false statements along with corresponding truths to follow." False statement. "Centrica Business Solutions sells North American business." Truth. "Usually one must get beyond the title on a letter before encountering falsehoods, not in this case. Perhaps some context may be helpful." "Centrica Business Solutions is the North American distributed energy business unit of Centrica PLC, a global diversified energy supply and services company based in the UK. Centrica PLC traces its roots back to 1812 and is one of the largest energy companies in the world. Centrica is a publicly traded company and is an investment-grade credit. Centrica Business Solutions, as Mr. Bibler falsely states, did not sell any of its business units. Centrica PLC, our parent company, sold one of its North American business units, Direct Energy. Direct Energy is a large retail supplier of electricity and natural gas. It is a separate and distinct corporate entity from Centrica, which is not impacted by this sale. Centrica has been open about this shifting focus toward the lower carbon future and has been making strategic decisions in recent years to best position the company to support this ideal. Such decisions include selling oil and gas, et cetera, et cetera." Next one. False statement. "As losses continue," I remember that specifically in his email. Truth. "Just this morning, Centrica released its financial results for the first half of the year. Our earnings before interest taxes and depreciation and amortization were 1.1 billion. Our operating profit was 439 million and our free cash flow was 960 million. These results, again, are for the first half of the year and include the negative impacts of COVID-19. All of these numbers are a matter of public record and can be easily verified, and I've got the website." False statement. "The company has been unable to make required payments to fund its pension plan." Truth. "While it's true that Centrica's pension plan, like many others, is underfunded, Centrica has never failed to make a required payment to the plan. Plans can become underfunded, meaning that the plan assets are insufficient to cover liabilities for many reasons. Centrica's plan, which has 12 and 1/2 billion in assets, saw its pension liability rise significantly in 2016 due to falling bond yields. At that time, the board decided to make annual payments of about 100 million over the subsequent 14 years to fortify the plan. Centrica has not missed any payments. Interestingly enough, of the 100 largest pension funds among US companies, 74 are underfunded. This often happens, especially in periods of low interest rates." False statement. "Today, under duress, Centrica Business Solutions announced that it sold its North American business, including any project in Hopkinton, to another huge energy conglomerate, NRG Energy." Truth. "As stated regarding a previous false statement, Centrica Business Solutions did not sell anything. As such, Mr. Bibler's assertion that the Hopkinton solar projects are part of the direct energy sale is false. Additionally, it is patently false to state that the sale of direct energy was made under duress. Direct Energy is a recognized leader in the industry and was an asset that was highly sought after in the marketplace. Centrica did not place any unit up for sale, nor did it solicit offers. The offer from NRG was unsolicited and represented a value of Centrica found attractive. Global Investment Bank UBS wrote in an analyst note this morning that it valued direct energy at about 2.85 billion, almost 1 billion below its sale price. This does not reflect a sale under duress." False statement. "The good news is that NRG is not a defunct entity and that so far as we know, it is not undergoing an existential crisis." Truth. "Centrica is not a defunct entity, far from it. In fact, Centrica carries investment-grade credit ratings from both Moody and S&amp;P. Additionally, we are not undergoing an existential crisis. Centrica is proud to serve the energy needs of over 25 million customers around the world. We've generated over 34 billion in revenue in 2019 with over 1 billion in operating earnings and over 2 billion in cash flow. Prior to direct energy sale, we had over 1.25 billion in the bank and assets of over 20 billion. Perhaps the best barometer of a company's financial condition is its credit rating. As previously stated, Centrica's credit rating is investment-grade from all major rating agencies, certainly not what one would expect from a company undergoing an existential crisis. It goes without saying that after the sale of direct energy closes with over 5 billion in the bank, Centrica will be in even stronger financial position." Next false statement. Although not a direct statement, Mr. Bibler implies in his letter that Centrica is among a group of solar profiteers. Truth. "Centrica respectfully asks that you draw conclusions about the company based on your own behavior, not to group us with other companies who may have worked in the area. There are several key areas in which Centrica's business model differs from other developers. First and foremost, Centrica has never solicited a single Hopkinton property owner for business. We have never cold-called anyone. We have never sent out direct mail flyers. We have never knocked on anyone's door. 100% of the projects we are working on in town arose out of result of townspeople approaching us. We have never offered to purchase land in town for the purpose of developing solar. Instead, when asked by property owners not seeking to own their own systems, if we could lease property from them for the purpose of developing solar, we have offered to do so. The fact is that leases of this type can be quite lucrative for property owners, even life-changing in certain circumstances. Of course, Centrica is in the business to make money. With every project we have built in the area, seeking to build in town, the property owner is a significant financial beneficiary." And he goes on to tell us that he apologizes for burdening us with the lengthy response from Mr. Bibler, but it was so full of falsehoods that it was not possible to set the record straight with brevity. "Centrica has always acted in good faith. Unfortunately, that does not always appear to be the case with others. I've had the opportunity to see Mr. Bibler speak at town meetings and have welcomed the opportunity to correct the false statements in real time, although it was disappointing that he would present more false statements, this time in writing to town boards and publish those false statements on social media. I feel I owe it to you, the council, the residents of Hopkinton, to set the record straight." That's from Doug Teletman. Just speaks to what Sylvia was talking about after reading this transcript on all these false statements that continually get made by someone who is fairly articulate and folks believe them. And, you know, thankfully, I don't, and I'm proud of that, and he knows that. As far as the project at hand with Father Gill, you know, I have to, again, revert back to the fact that we've got a couple of houses on this project. One, I believe, is going to be destroyed. The other one is going to be there. But unlike the Chase Hill project, I know that the hearing process dedicated some time to the fact that they needed to seek a subdivision approval for that particular property. So that was really good that they mentioned that because it's really, really important to not have any split zones. You know, I kind of harp on the fact that Attorney Sirdat had always said, both projects, that, you know, he's taken consideration, into consideration, you know, the abutters' concerns and, okay, and the projects got reduced, but, you know, I didn't get one email or call or one abutter or any resident that was in favor of it. So I guess, I don't know to what extent they worked on the abutters or worked on any neighbors that were opposed to it, because I know they were, projects were reduced, but I just am at odds as to how much was worked on with the residents to get these projects lowered and hopefully approved by the residents. I just, I didn't see it. In my opinion, these subdivisions that occurred are very, very much different than the prior projects that I've approved, prior projects that others have not. But with homes being on these sites and, you know, I just, my personal opinion, I'm not a planner or an attorney, but I think that these subdivision processes should have taken place before they sought any type of legal, excuse me, any type of solar project approval. Because you're still left with that and it still has to go before the planning board for subdivision approval. And I'm not so sure that that's going to happen. So anyway, I'm not going to approve this. And I want to also say for the record that, I know Sylvia has mentioned this before, that, you know, I think we've reached a point where, you know, there's probably not going to be, I guess I've reached a limit on a lot of these solar projects unless it's in a brownfield or a gravel bank perhaps, but it's just, we've had a difficult couple of years and I think we've done our part as a town council and a community in approving these or town council, I should say. So anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion made and seconded. I know myself and Sylvia went on rather long. Sorry to keep you guys, but does council have any further comments? Sharon, anything?
I just wanted to say that it appears that the comprehensive plan can be interpreted both for and against solar because of policy PSF 17, which says, "Encourage renewable energy projects in the private sector," and recommendation 18 says, "Consider expanding the current zoning regulations to allow photovoltaic installations in residential districts." That word, "consider," some people take as it's okay to do and other people take it's okay to think about, but you still should make a choice about whether it's really part of the comprehensive plan. And in my opinion, I think that when they made the zone map that everyone's looking at that has to get changed every time we approve these projects in residential zones, they said, "Consider." But you look at how much of that map was left red, which means manufacturing, and yellow was commercial. I mean, it's like one dot out of 1,000 dots if you looked at the map. So even though the comprehensive plan says, "Consider," the map certainly was not ever increased. You know, they should, if they really wanted more things in residential zones, they should have increased the amount of commercial property zones at the same time. And so I really think that it's been difficult to listen to my fellow council people say, "Well, it goes with the comprehensive plan," and other people say, "It doesn't go with the comprehensive plan." And so obviously, it's open to interpretation and every town council has the responsibility to vote their heart and what they think is the best, based on all the information that they have. And I resent anybody suggesting that that is not happening. I really, I think every councilor thinks and weighs everything completely, and if we come up with different viewpoints, that is just the way it is. But I really resent anybody thinking that somebody's not, that the council people are not considering every project. I want to make that statement. Thank you.
Sharon, did that come out tonight? I don't remember hearing anything about...
I'm sorry, but I felt that Counselor Capalba was trying to say, and maybe I took it personally and I shouldn't have, but she was trying to say, "Every project needs to be evaluated on its own because if somebody's not doing that." And I just want to make sure, for the record, for everybody to know that I don't just whip out and say no to everything.
Okay.
I really look at it and in my interpretation, and I vote my heart, I do look at the projects, et cetera. So I just wanted, that just kind of bothered me, so I wanted to get it out.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Point well taken. Barbara, do you have a comment you all said?
Yeah, I do. When you, when we as a counselor take a look at all of these solar projects that we have been looking at for the last three or four years, we have all made different decisions on each of the different solar projects. No one has been across the board against them or for them, except, I take offense...
Except for me, yes, and I totally say that.
Sharon, one second.
I can't get you both together.
Sharon, one second.
Because I take offense that you make a decision before it comes to the council. You make the decision in the planning board.
Sharon.
You have told them that you will vote for them or against them, and you are at the planning board. You make those decisions at the council because you're a counselor and you are expected.
When I make any comment...
Sharon, hold on Barbara. Hold on Barbara, hold on one second.
I can't get that, you guys. I can't get over you.
Sharon. Sharon.
Yes.
Sharon, I was kind enough to let you speak. You have to let Barbara speak without interrupting. Don't interrupt again. Don't interrupt again. It's not professional, please.
You are expected on council to listen to developers and citizens honestly and objectively until you make your decision. You do not announce your decision in a planning board meeting or anywhere else until you are at council. We are elected by the people. Yes, you can have an opinion about something overall, that is your right, but to announce your decision before it is in front of the council, there are developers that will ask you to recuse because you have, you are no longer objective. It is a problem and you have not recognized it. And we have all tried telling you, just make your decision at council. It is important because you're going to have developers literally tell you to recuse because you have made a decision before it's even been brought in front of us. And I think that's a problem. And anyone who is running for council, you make these decisions at this table. You do not make it out in the public or out in specifically a conservation or a commission meeting that is recorded, that is a public hearing. It is a public meeting. We are responsible to the public, but not at a meeting that is not a council meeting. I do take offense at that because it is important that we are as objective as we can, as we hear our citizens and we hear developers speak to us at the council table. hear our citizens and we hear developers speak to us at the council table. I take that very seriously, and I get quite upset when people are making their decisions ahead of time instead of being objective at the table.
Okay, thanks, Barb. Sharon, do you want one more comment or two?
Yes, because, just because I say that, I have not made a decision when I talk in the planning board, but as a citizen, I can still say that I don't like certain aspects of the project. I think I have that right. And I have not made a decision. I have not made a decision at the planning board.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, let's leave it at that, Barbara. I think both points were well taken, so, all right. So appreciate the patience of everybody out there. So we had a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the Father Gill project by the council? Okay. Having heard none, I guess all those in favor of Sylvia's motion, and I believe Sharon, you seconded it, right?
Yes.
Okay. All those signify by saying your name and yes. If you're not approve of the motion, then your name and no.
This is Barbara. I.
Okay.
This is Sylvia Thompson. I agree to reject it.
This is Sharon Davis. I agree to reject it.
Counselor Vice President Scott Billhurst, I vote to reject it, and I vote aye.
Frank Lindolfi, no, reject. That's unanimous. Okay.
Wait a minute.
You didn't mean it that way.
You said no, and then you said it was unanimous, so are you, I think you need to clarify your vote.
Well, my vote is to reject the project in, is in favor of your motion. Yes, correct. Yes. So that is unanimous.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Public forum?
Public forum? We got, okay, Joe. Chris, all right, let me just see, ask to unmute, okay. Joe, you out there? Joe? Joe?
Hi, Frank.
Hi.
Good evening. This is Joe Moreau, Odepo Road. I must apologize. I believe you heard me yell "yay" when the Chase Hill Road decision was announced.
Oh, that was you, okay.
That was me. You know, normally when muted, I do not unmute myself, but anyway.
Okay.
First thing I want to say is that, and it is important to remember that the first responsibility of the town council members is to our town and not for the state. Our town has done more than it's theirs here when it comes to solar. I live in Hopkinton first. I would also like to thank the members who voted no to these two projects. In my opinion, you did the right thing. As far as Chase Hill Road, I distinctly remember Scott asking at a meeting, or a hearing, and Mr. Serenzi was speaking, and Scott asked if he would consider reducing the size of the project, and Mr. Serenzi's comment was that, well, my attorney's late and he's not here. And as far as I know, that was the end of it. Frank had asked, and I didn't realize it until tonight, Frank had asked for several items, and that never happened. My friend Ted Dian was one of the two posits abutters. Ted was concerned so much that every time we spoke, he talked about this project. I know it affected his health. I saw it, and he told me so. Ted passed away on March 1st, 2020, and I'm sure tonight he is smiling from above. I agree with Frank. The Grills and the Dian family have been very respectful. I remember Ted's nephew saying that he was taking his emotions out of it and just stating facts, which he did. I have two other points quickly for informational purposes only. I understand, it was mentioned at the last meeting, that the DPW director, Mr. Teff, is leaving. I would hope that the town would consider promoting from within David Caswell, who I believe has the best interest of our town. The last thing I want to say real quick, and I know Kevin is on the line. At a town council meeting on March 18th, 2020, under New Business Point 3, it was talking about future procedures to ensure that the town is protected in terms of being reimbursed for legally mandated out-of-pocket expenses advanced as a result of applications filed for zoning. And I agree with that. I know it's still pending. I was told today for the Woodhill project, there's $2,829.95 still outstanding due to the town. I had suggested a possibility of a lien on a project, denying future building permits, and Kevin explained to me that we could not put a lien on the property, but we'd have a serious discussion if they applied for a building permit. I believe that this landowner should be held accountable for that. In closing, again, I want to thank you for all your hard work, and I want to thank you for your decisions on these two projects. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Okay. Hold on one second here. Okay, phone number ending in 5761? Hello?
Hi, it's Carol DeRogers.
Yes, Carol.
I want to thank you all for your votes this evening, but I have to speak to my dismay about one town council member berating another town council member in a public forum. I am appalled that that would occur in a public situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh. Hold on. I don't see any more hands.
Are we all set?
Yeah. Oh, hold on, I'm sorry. Phone number ending in 0274. Hello? 0274 phone number?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, Frank?
Yes.
Frank, can you hear me? It's Sherri Aronian. How are you?
Oh, hi, Sherri, hi.
Good. You know, I just wanted to, and correct me if I'm wrong, because like, you know, I don't speak at public forum very often. Can I ask a question of the council? Am I allowed to do that, or am I just allowed to speak?
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't know what the question is.
I know, obviously.
But, you know, I mean, if it pertains to the meeting tonight, certainly, but if it's on another topic, probably not, but you can, you know how to get me or anyone else. But is it on tonight's meeting?
Um, kind of. I guess kind of. It's just, you know, some of the discussion that ensued, I just wanted, I guess maybe let me speak to it, and then if you can answer it, great. If you can't, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Let's do it that way.
Yep.
You know, I wanted to speak to, and I'm speaking personally, because I've done a lot of research on, you know, I've done a lot of reading, you know, on the town ordinances and stuff through the last two years. And one section that has always kind of stuck with me, and I'd love if either you could answer it or if Kevin could clarify it, because it's kind of eaten at me for two years. In the land and subdivision regulations, there's a section that talks about zone changes, okay? And it says that if a zone change is required, okay, it goes to the planning board for an advisory opinion, and then from there, it's supposed to get a master plan. And then from there, it goes to the town council. So when I read that, that's how I think the order of operations should be. And I interpret planning board advisory to mean if the planning board issued a positive advisory to you guys. So let's say they approved it, and then it comes to you with a master plan, and they, and you guys as a council say, no, sorry, planning board, we don't like this. We're going to reject it. We understand you liked it. We do not. That's how I read that. And apparently, I'm wrong, because, you know, I know you've said time and time again that the planning board is purely advisory, but I kind of had it reversed in my head as if the planning board had issued a positive, that you guys are the fail-safe on that, that you have the final say if they issued a positive. Now, that made me, you know, kind of step back and say, well, that makes sense as to why it says a master plan is needed. So that's where my confusion has always lied. And I would love it if you guys can clarify it. I understand if you can't this evening, but, you know, when a resident reads something like that, there's some confusion. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, point well taken. Yeah, thanks, Sharon. Kevin, do you want to, you want to just answer that offline, and I can forward it to Sherri, or do you want to, you think it's, you're okay to answer it?
Well, I'm not, I don't know exactly what subdivision regulation she's referring to, and I don't have them all memorized.
Okay.
But I can, I think I can alleviate the confusion. What we talk about for advisory opinions is when an applicant applies for a zone change for a particular piece of property, and that's governed by state law, and you can look it up, Rhode Island general law is 45-24-51 and 45-24-53. And it specifies the procedures that are to be followed for the zone change and the timeframe in which this has to be considered. And the first step procedurally is that the application for the zone change is referred to the planning board for an advisory opinion. And then, within a certain period of time, and then the planning board has to hear it in a public hearing and send an advisory opinion to the town council. The key word there in the statute is advisory, which means it's not mandatory or binding on the council. This means the council should consider it, but in the end, it's a legislative process, and the council can amend or not amend the zoning ordinance and classification and future land use map to the comprehensive plan as it sees fit. But it's a process that's governed by state statutes. The two statutes I just cited, you can look at those, and there's no reference in those to master plans or subdivision regulations. So that, I hope that helps the confusion, but you need to read the governing state law. There is a whole separate title chapters governing planning board operations, but they're generally separate tracks with the law, state laws that apply to town councils and ordinance changes. So you can't mix them up, which I've heard a lot of people mixing them up. It doesn't work that way. So that's the best I can answer in the abstract.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Sherri, if that doesn't answer your question, just email me any further confusing parts of that, and I can get an answer for you. Okay. Thank you. Okay, nothing else.
All right. This is Sylvia Thompson. I'd like to adjourn the meeting tonight in memory of two giants, Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg and Ed Wood. And I would like to share with you some information about Ed Wood. I'm sure there are people who have lived in town all their life and have no idea what he's been up to his whole life, some of it perhaps. But then there are people who are new to town, and they certainly wouldn't know. From my point of view, and I'm sure there are many who would agree, Ed Wood is, was a man of honor, integrity, sacrifice. He gave to his town, the state, the nation, and the world. He gave his time. He did not boast or seek press. He was what I refer to as one of my secret weapons. And what I mean by that is when there's an environmental grave issue confronting our town, on a couple occasions, it's happened. My first call was to Ed Wood in 2007, when Loves Truck Stop wanted to be situated at Exit 1 near the rest stop in that back property that butts the Hopkinton Historical and other residences around that area. So certainly in town, there were some that were, that approved of this, and there were many who also opposed it. I did oppose it, and I called Ed Wood. At the time, in 2007, Vinnie Cordone was the council president. I was the VP. And what we did with Ed Wood is we set up a small committee of town leaders, for instance, like Thuram Silks, who is also past. And it was that committee that charted the course on how to deal with this billion-dollar company who will go into a community and just tire them out legally. You may appeal it or fight it, whatever it is they want to do, and very often, they won. They didn't, they didn't win in this instance. It took 10 years, but Loves is not at Exit 1. I would like to read something about Ed Wood, and it was in the Providence Journal on September 18th, and the heading is Rhode Island Environmental Leader Ed Wood Dies at 79. W. Edward Wood, a one-time Providence Journal reporter who became a pillar of the environmental community in Rhode Island before helping lead an international health initiative cofounded by President Bill Clinton, died Tuesday at his home in Hopkinton after suffering a heart attack. He was 79. Wood, known as Ed, was the second director of the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, but as the first to serve in the post for a prolonged period from 1977 to 1982. He is credited with laying the groundwork for historic improvements in water quality in near Gansett Bay and enhanced protection for national resources all over the state. As Director of the State Department of Transportation, a post he was appointed to in 1982 after winning Claudettes for his work on the environment, he took a lead role in moving, oh my goodness, the Wunusquetucket.
Wunusquetucket.
Thank you. And the Moss Hutsuck rivers?
Wunusquetucket.
Oh, my goodness.
I used to work in those properties.
Okay, rivers.
Try putting that on a loan application.
And tearing down what was known as the world's widest bridge to help remake downtown Providence. He would go to work as a consultant for Ira Magaziner, the businessman who became an advisor to President Clinton before pursuing other ventures. Later in life, Magaziner convinced Wood to come out of retirement to head up operations for the Clinton Health Access Initiative, an international program to combat AIDS and other diseases that is now active in 39 developing nations. Magaziner said Wood's passing will be mourned particularly in Africa, where he was most active. One woman in Tanzania, whose life Ed helped save, named her baby Ed Wood. Magaziner wrote in a mail, in an email, "A baby who would have died were it not for Ed is now a flourishing young man." Jane Coit, DEM Director since 2011, knew Wood from the Nature Conservancy, where he served as a board member in Rhode Island, and he was the state director. She compared the breadth of his achievements to the late U.S. Senator John Chaffee, for whom she once worked. "He had such an incredible impact wherever he went," she said. Wood was born in 1941 in Salt State Marie, Ontario, Canada, and grew up outside Detroit. He received a bachelor's degree in political science at the University of Michigan. After graduating in 1962, he joined the Marine Corps and served 13 months as a captain in Vietnam. Upon returning, he got a master's degree in Japanese study, also at Michigan, before becoming a reporter first with the Associated Press in Indiana, where he covered the civil rights movement, and then with the Providence Journal. He moved into state government in 1975 as assistant to the Public Utilities Commission and joined the Department of National Resources to Ed is now a flourishing young man." Jane Coit, DEM Director since 2011, knew Wood from the Nature Conservancy, where he served as a board member in Rhode Island, and he was the state director. She compared the breadth of his achievements to the late U.S. Senator John Chaffee, for whom she once worked. "He had such an incredible impact wherever he went," she said. Wood was born in 1941 in Salt State Marie, Ontario, Canada, and grew up outside Detroit. He received a bachelor's degree in political science at the University of Michigan. After graduating in 1962, he joined the Marine Corps and served 13 months as a captain in Vietnam. Upon returning, he got a master's degree in Japanese study, also at Michigan, before becoming a reporter first with the Associated Press in Indiana, where he covered the civil rights movement, and then with the Providence Journal. He moved into state government in 1975 as assistant to the Public Utilities Commission and joined the Department of National Resources two years later. Wood was pivotal in transforming the troubled department into a new environmental agency that would take on an expanded role regulating air, land, and water pollution in the state. Then-Governor Joseph Garrett named him director of the newly created DEM in 1977. Robert Bendick became Wood's deputy before replacing him as DEM director when Garrett tapped Wood to take over the transportation department and clean up its scandal-plagued operations. Bendick and Wood worked closely together on the river relocation project that transformed Providence. He was very driven to accomplish good things, and Bendick, who now works for the Nature Conservancy on the Gulf Coast, getting stuff done, not just talking about it. Catherine Sparks got to know Wood after he hired her as a forester in 1977. At the time, no other woman had held the position at the agency or its predecessor. "We're all trying to save the planet." "He really upped the game," said Sparks, who is now the assistant director of the Bureau of National Resources at DEM. Brian Jones, a former Journal reporter, said Wood told him that the skills he honed as a journalist to learn facts quickly and then speak and write about them clearly were essential to his ability to switch professions. He recalled a story about a road trip that took Wood and his wife Linda past Worcester at the time when Wood was working to clean up a sewage treatment plant that was polluting the bay. He announced an unscheduled detour into the city. When she asked why, Wood said Worcester had installed some sort of super-secondary processing unit at its new wastewater treatment plant, "And maybe he could learn something that would, could be applied to the Providence facility," Jones wrote in an email. Coit remembers her surprise when Wood took the job with the Clinton Health Access Initiative in 2001. "I couldn't believe it," she said. "This was a guy who told me he was going to retire, and then I hear him talking about taking about meeting with all these leaders in Africa." During his decade with the initiative, Wood opened offices across the continent. By doing that, he is fully responsible for the survival of millions of Africans who are suffering from AIDS and other communicable diseases and maternal child problems. I'm not even going to try to pronounce this. Dr. Esameer, vice president of the initiative and country doctor in Ethiopia, wrote in an email. "Wood's varied career also included a stint as chief of staff to Bruce Governor, Governor Bruce Sunland in the early 1990s and as the head of a cable television company in the Midwest. After he truly retired in 2011, Wood remained involved with the Hopkinton Land Trust and Wood Park Watershed Association, of which he was the founder. The association formed when Wood was leaving the DEM. Instead of a going-away present, he asked colleagues to make donations to a fund to create the association, which of course is still active today. Wood was an active traveler who had been to every state except North Dakota. "He kept trying to find a way to get there," his daughter said, Erica Wood, and to more than 75 countries. After his death, Erica and her brother Dan Wood found a list of countries their father wanted to visit. About 20 years ago, Wood and his wife bought a former pig farm next to their Hope Valley home, and with the help of friends, decided to turn it into a vineyard. Dan Ionata, who met Wood at the Journal and became press secretary for the late U.S. John Pastore, was part of the group. They planted 1,000 vines, and their vine has steadily improved," said Ionata. "This fall, we're looking to forward, this fall, we're looking forward to the heaviest crop we've ever had," he said. "It will be the Ed Wood vintage." Wood is survived by his wife 57 years, Linda, daughter Erica, son Dan, and his brother William Wood, and three grandchildren, Mize, Aya, and Camille. Thank you.
Okay.
I know, we've been talking a lot, but these two are giants.
Yeah, that's absolutely true.
Did you mention her name?
Especially Ed Wood really started WPWA.
You know, just.
I just mentioned her name.
Ed Wood beat me twice with town moderator. I was a Republican candidate, and he was a Democrat. He prevailed. Back in a little Hopkin and Trivia thing, the town moderator was always elected at a meeting, and they finally decided to put it on a ballot as an elected office, and I ended up being a Republican candidate. He ended up being a Democratic candidate, and he prevailed, and I ran against him four years later. I think it was four years later. So, he beat me twice. He was certainly a man who, of accomplishment, and I do recognize his service.
He was a wonderful man. He was kind, kind and thoughtful.
You all set, Barb? Okay. Okay. I believe we had a motion made and seconded to adjourn in memory of Mr. Wood and the late Justice Ginsburg. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.